I call to order this meeting of the Cowee County Board of Education Agenda 802, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Action items, or that's not right, no, recognitions, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I'll call on Public Information Officer, Mr. Dean Jackson, to bring you recognitions. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Horton, board members. We have two recognitions tonight. The first is our core business, and tonight we have Arbor Springs Elementary School with us, and we're going to get a presentation from them on co-teaching math. I am going to call on Principal Stephanie Golden to come forward, if you would, and please introduce our teachers and students here tonight.
All right, good evening. I am Stephanie Golden, the proud principal of Arbor Springs Elementary, and we would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with you some of the wonderful things that are happening at Arbor. Aligned to our school improvement plan, we have placed a very heavy emphasis on data-driven instruction. We also are, as our teachers, as well as the staff, we are really taking time to analyze our data, to tailor our teaching methods to the unique needs of our students. In this academic year, we have set focus on enhancing our mathematics instruction. So, I have two wonderful fourth-grade teachers that were very bold to decide to collaborate by combining their classrooms. And so with that, there are times, there are 25 to 30 fourth graders in one classroom, and they come together in this environment to participate in stations. And so tonight, I am very fortunate to have Ms. Hembry, as well as Ms. Curry here, to share with us some of the details of this innovative practice, and I have some of my awesome gators here as well, some of my students, that are going to tell you about their experience being in this class.
Good evening. My name is Morgan Hembry, and I am a fourth-grade math teacher at Arbor Springs Elementary.
And my name is McKenna Curry, and I'm also a fourth-grade math teacher at Arbor Springs Elementary School. Next slide.
Each Thursday, our fourth-grade gifted students are pulled for enrichment, which leaves us with smaller class sizes. Ms. Curry and I decided that because of our smaller class sizes, we can utilize the co-teaching model to better support the needs of our students. We analyze our iReady data, use formal and informal assessments, as well as classroom performance, to create small groups that will provide differentiated instruction and support.
After combining and grouping our students based on their academic needs, we developed four instructional stations. This allowed us to have two teacher-led stations and two independent stations. The teacher-led stations were run by Ms. Hembry and I. Each week, my station provided differentiated instruction based on the standard currently being taught. In Ms. Hembry's station, she would expose students to the new content by pre-teaching an upcoming standard. One independent station would utilize the iReady Math Path program to provide individualized instruction, while the other independent station would use a variety of fact fluency tools to increase automaticity of multiplication and division facts. Next slide.
All right, so for the slideshow, on this particular Thursday, I was pre-teaching the standard 4 MBT3, which requires our students to use place-value understanding to round multi-digit whole numbers to any place. I would create a multi-digit whole number on my place-value flip chart, and the students would write that number on their place-value chart provided. On my spinning wheel, I wrote out place-value positions from the tens' place to the millions' place. The students would take turns spinning the wheel, and we would work together as a small group to round our number to the place-value position that the wheel landed on. Next slide, please. After 15 minutes of working with me, my small group would then rotate to their next station, which was iReady My Path. At this station, the students would work independently to help close gaps and create lessons, complete lessons on their individual levels.
Next slide, please. After another 15 minutes, the same small group came to my station where I provided instruction on the current standard, which was 4 MBT2. This standard required students to compare two digit, or two multi-digit numbers based on meanings of the digits in each place using the greater than, less than, and equal to symbols to record the results of comparisons. On my spinning wheel, I wrote a variety of multi-digit numbers. Each student would take turns spinning the wheel and would record the number on a dry-erase board. We would use strategies taught in class to compare the two numbers. I was able to differentiate my station by changing the numbers on my spinning wheel to larger and smaller numbers based on the level of the group. After 15 minutes of working with me, this small group would rotate to their last independent station to practice fact fluency. Next slide, please.
We feel that by executing our co-teaching instruction in combination with our daily spiral warm-ups, our students were able to show tremendous mathematical growth and understanding. Our Georgia milestone math score showed a 17% increase from 2022 to 2023, growing from 75% to 92% of our students scoring proficient or higher.
We love the opportunity to work alongside each other and the students from both classes. Tonight, we brought several students to speak about their experiences. Here we have Lola Coley, Josiah Five, Grayson Bettis, and Chance Spriggle.
Hi, my name is Lola Coley. Last year, I had Miss Curry for fourth-grade math and participated in Math Block. What I liked most about Math Block was the fun way we rotated through the different learning activities. One of the activities taught me how to use fractions with a chocolate bar. We used, we learned how to simplify fractions by breaking up the bar, and then we got to eat it. I really enjoyed learning in Math Block. It was very unique.
The thing I liked most about the math groups was the engaging activities. The activities taught me a lot about adding large values, place values, and division. The activities taught me how these subjects connect to the real world by relating them to money. My future goals include becoming a entrepreneur. If my dreams of being an MLB player or NFL player don't pan out.
The thing I like most about this class is it helped prepare me for the milestones, which I scored a four. This activity taught me a lot about multiplying and simplifying fractions. This activity taught me how this subject connects to the real world by using measurements to build things. My future goal is if I don't get drafted into the MLB, I want to build my own sports facility.
Hi, my name is Josiah Five. One thing I liked about Math Block is having stations. During stations, we learn math tools. One of my favorite tools were the box method. My dream is to make the MLB. I also want to be an engineer.
Thank you guys so much.
I would love to come visit one day and see this in action, so I'll certainly be in touch. Did you say you'd do it on Thursday? Perfect. I work from home on Thursday, and that's my get-out-and-visit day, so perfect. But I'll be in touch. That's great. Seventeen percent increases. I mean, amazing. Great to see.
I don't know about you, Mr. Glover. I want to come on the day they eat those candy bars. It's my kind of fractions lesson.
I can learn something that day, I think.
Yeah, what a fantastic job. I think each one of you spoke so well and did such a fantastic job. You are going to be successful being an engineer, or being in the MLB, whatever you choose to do, because you guys did a fantastic job tonight.
For our second recognition tonight, once again, as has been the case for several years, all three of our high schools made the U.S. News &amp; World Reports Best U.S. High School list, the 2023 list. That means that East Calwita High School, Northgate High School, and Noonan High School, all three were recognized as some of the highest-achieving schools in the United States Public Schools among both public high schools and charter schools in the United States. We have representatives, the principals of all three high schools tonight. I'm going to call them down, and I'm also going to call on the school system's Director of Instructional Services and Gifted Education, Dr. Chase Puckett, to introduce them and make this recognition.
Good evening. Dr. Golden, I'm already intimidated by their backup career choices, so tonight, we're here to celebrate the good things that are going on in Calwita County. It is my privilege to recognize three of our schools that have gone above and beyond consistently in our community, but they've especially achieved some recognition that we need to celebrate. Each year, the U.S. News &amp; World Reports calculates the best high school rankings in the nation. We are excited to celebrate all three of our Calwita County high schools who ranked very well on the 23-24 Best High Schools report. These rankings are calculated based on the following criteria: college readiness, state assessment proficiency on the milestones, state assessment performance, how we serve our underserved student performance-privileged, low-income students and minority students, our college curriculum breadth, and the number of students taking and succeeding in AP Advanced Placement courses, and our graduation rate. As a district, Calwita County School System ranked 30th out of 194 Georgia districts when examined in terms of overall college readiness. We ranked 18th as a school system in terms of math proficiency, and 24th in terms of reading proficiency. Calwita County School System consistently performs well among our peers. In fact, Calwita County School System performs exceptionally well when compared with those large school systems with over 10,000 students. It's my privilege to celebrate and recognize our principals, who've done a phenomenal job, and there is no more complicated job than being the principal of a high school. So I am joined by the principal of East Calwita High School, Mr. Steve Allen. East Calwita High School has been recognized as in the top 38% of public high schools nationally, the top 30% among high schools in the state of Georgia. I'm also joined by Principal Dr. Jamal Kemp from Noonan High School. Noonan High School is being recognized for being in the top 22% among public high schools nationally, and in the top 18% among Georgia public high schools. And Dr. Ashley Wilks is here, principal of Northgate High School, and they have the distinction of being in the top 17% of all public high schools in the nation, and the top 14% among Georgia public high schools. Please join me in celebrating these principals and their staff members for this phenomenal achievement for Calwita County School System.
Well, Mr. Jackson's getting y'all lined up. I just want to say congratulations and thanks so much for the work y'all doing. And also point out that it's not just the high school administration and staff that get this award. This is really for the whole county, from all of our elementary school principals and teachers, like Ms. Hembry and Ms. Curry, putting that effort in. It starts at their age and even younger, and goes through high school. So it's really, I'd see it as a county-wide recognition and a system-wide recognition.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the called minutes of August 23rd, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Mrs. Dees is abstaining. Motion carries six to zero with one abstention. Action items, Group One, Dr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first action item I have for you in Group One is to approve the FY 2024 Local Board Governance Training Plan. As required by OCGA 20-2-51, we're submitting our Local Board of Education Governance Training Plan for FY 2024. This plan can be revised should the need arise. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the FY 2024 Local Board Governance Training Plan. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
For the next action item, I'll call on Dr. Guy. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. I'd like to call your attention to policy EBD-R, Heating and Lighting. This has been tabled, or we presented it last month, and it's sat on the table for over 30 days, and we submit that for your approval. This is the policy that aligns with the recommendations from the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, where our set point for summer temperatures can now be lowered to 72 degrees with your approval.
I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the policy revision. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.
The last action item I have for you in Group One is to approve an allowance request to provide additional soil nail wall and helical piles to Noonan High School BP2. Approval is requested for an allowance request to install helical piles and an additional soil nail wall near the southwest corner of the ninth-grade building. Engineers responsible for the design of the soil nail wall recommend this modification to provide structural support of the ninth-grade building during excavation for the remaining footings for sidewalks at the new gymnasium. This modification also requires additional grading work. To avoid delays in the project completion schedule, a field change has been approved to proceed with the work. Total allowance request cost is $128,000, excuse me, $128,080. Change order proposal and supporting documentation is attached. Board members, this is one that I sent you when I got it last week, and Mike, if you would, there's just, just for everyone's reference, you can see the southwest corner of the ninth-grade building there. That's the east-facing wall of the new gym, and the area that's excavated right there with what looks to be the black tarp and the rebar is the area we're talking about. So you can see, we're working in pretty tight quarters there, and the structural, or the engineers recommend that we do this change to shore things up. So with that, I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent to approve an allowance request to provide additional soil, nail wall, and helical piles to Noonan High School Bid Package 2. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero. There are no action items in Group Two nor Three, so Superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll call on Mr. Keith Chapman to bring you budget reporting and sales tax. Mr. Chapman.
Good evening. For the month of August, we were under budget approximately $420,000 cumulative. We are under approximately $430,000. A good start to the year. Sales tax, we saw an extremely large collection for the month, almost $4.2 million. We did find out the Department of Revenue had upgraded their software last year. There were some complications with it. That amount included almost a million-dollar adjustment over the prior year correcting it. They have assured us things are correct going forward. We continue to see good collections in spite of that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Call on Dr. Guy to bring you staff and student attendance. Dr. Guy.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. For the first attendance reporting period of the school year, the highest staff attendance goes to Elton Street Elementary School. Highest student attendance in the program area was Central Educational Center. Highest elementary student attendance was Cannon Gate Elementary School. Highest middle school student attendance goes to Madras Middle School, and the highest high school student attendance, home of the Vikings, Northgate High School. For your board goal report this evening, I'd like to provide an update on Calwita County student enrollment numbers. As of Wednesday, September 6th, the Calwita County School System had a student enrollment number of 10,229 elementary students throughout the entire system, 5,000 middle school students throughout all middle schools, and 7,404 high school students, for a grand total of 22,633 students enrolled. We did end last school year with 22,784 total students. We have 151 less students at this time on September 6th than we did at May 2023, but as you already know, we tend to grow throughout the school year in total student enrollment. With elementary enrollment typically moving upward, and high school numbers slightly decreasing as we progress through the course of the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Guy. On the Facilities and Construction Report, just the top three there, you can see Northgate and Madras. We're still waiting on some closeout documents. Softball field houses, those renovations and additions we're looking at at East Calwita, Northgate, and Noonan, final drawings are complete, and we're hoping to receive those bids on October 3rd. Band tower work at each of the high schools is progressing at this point. You'll start to see installation of footings and slabs, and of course, all the paving projects for the summer are substantially complete. Board members, I figure we'd do something a little bit different tonight regarding Noonan High. Mr. Britt and some of, some of the staff and some of our students were out at Noonan High School yesterday and took some drone footage, and Mr. Harris, if you don't mind pulling that up, we'll take a look at some of the progress there at Noonan High School. I think it's, I think it's great. One of our students actually took that drone footage, and as I was watching it today, I was just glad that I was not the pilot.
And this is definitely a less dusty way to tour it than what me and you did.
Absolutely. I've ruined more than one pair of shoes. As you can see, a lot of work's been done, a lot of work still to go, but the project is progressing nicely. We're still on track to occupy the new gym at the end of October, and on track to occupy the academics next July. So just wanted to bring you a little bit different version of the Facilities and Construction Report tonight. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Horton. We're moving on to the public comment section of the agenda. We're a little early tonight, but I will go over board policy, BCBI, public participation board meetings. In order to improve communication between the Board of Education and the citizens of Cowee County, the Board of Education encourages citizens to attend regularly-scheduled board meetings and speak on matters of general public education concerns. Forty-five minutes will be set aside for this purpose at each Board of Education meeting. To guarantee an orderly meeting and ensure that as many people as possible have an opportunity to speak, the Board of Education has implemented the following rule regarding public comment. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. The Board of Education will listen to each presentation without comment. Excuse me. After the presentation is made, each board member may respond if he or she wishes for a period no longer than one minute. Each, only citizens of Cowee County or employees of the Cowee County School System may speak in the public comment portion of the meeting. No grievances will be heard concerning any specific personnel action or any specific county employee, except through the grievance process set forth in the Board's personnel policy. No one will be allowed to discuss any matter involving threatened or pending litigation with the Board of Education during the public comment portion of the meeting. In the need to preserve order in the meeting, no person attending the meeting shall be, will be allowed to boo, cheer, clap, or otherwise show approval or disapproval for any speaker in any manner whatsoever. No signs or placards advocating any position, action, or position will be allowed at the meeting. No personal attacks on any person will be allowed. As the chairman of the board, I'm the presiding officer and responsible for enforcing these rules. No citizen or system employee will be retaliated against in any manner whatsoever for speaking on matters of public concern at the Board of Education meeting. Any person not recognized within the allotted time period for the public comment will be rescheduled to speak at the next meeting. Request to speak during the public comment portion of a meeting must be received at the Board of Education office no later than three hours prior to that meeting being called to order. And so with that, we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Alan Brady.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. At last month's meeting, I heard a speaker say that in expressing to the board members her concern about finding that there were even more books present in school libraries with sexually explicit content, she used the phrase, "compliance with Marxists that hate America, Christians, and our families." One of the board members replied with the question, "Who are the Marxists?" That is an excellent question and one that deserves an answer. In several of my previous presentations to you, I have mentioned a number of famous Marxist luminaries, mostly associated with education and more specifically, education of educators. Most famous is probably the Brazilian and eventually Harvard Professor Paulo Freire, who Wikipedia, not the greatest source, I know. who Wikipedia, not the greatest source I know, lists as a Christian socialist. However, Freire and his disciples were responsible for spreading philosophy that can be described as cultural Marxism throughout the college education departments and beyond. His nineteen-sixty-eight book, Pedagogy of the Oppressed, is the most cited book in college education departments. As I mentioned in an earlier talk, he and his disciples and their works figure prominently in a document I found online from La Grange College titled, Department of Education Handbook for Advanced Education Programs for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two academic year. But rather than go through the litany of luminaries throughout Marxist history, I'd just like to explain in simple terms what is meant by Marxist in the current discussion in more of a "you shall know them by their fruits" fashion. For about a hundred years, the dominant form of Marxism was economic as envisioned by its namesake. This was tried repeatedly, most famously by the former Soviet Union, who imposed it on much of their side of the Iron Curtain after World War II. It turned out not to result in a worker's paradise or a social utopia, but a brutal reign of terror by a series of strong men, while the proletariat, who was supposed to be in charge, suffered under them. By the nineteen-sixties, Marxist academics began to realize that the oppressed workers in the West and other parts of the world didn't think that capitalism and its resulting prosperity was so bad and simply would not take to the streets for a revolution like they wanted, so they had to find another way. In nineteen eighty-nine, Poland became the first Soviet satellite to buck the system and elected an anti-communist prime minister. The other Eastern Bloc countries soon followed suit, and eventually even the Soviet Union's communist government collapsed and was replaced. The Berlin Wall came down, and the West celebrated. No more duck-and-cover and fallout shelters like I grew up with. But in that same year, The New York Times, who we all know as the paper of record, published an article entitled, "The Mainstreaming of Marxism in U.S. Colleges." Now, the paper of record, like our local paper, has its online content behind the paywall, so I could not get access to the article directly, but I found an article from twenty-twenty by the Foundation for Economic Education that described the contents of this New York Times article and brought it forward to today, or at least to three years ago. A lot has changed even since then. Point was that within the ivory tower, Marxism was mutating from an economic system that had failed spectacularly to a different form of the same old Marxist model of oppressed and oppressor, who were set against one another in perpetual conflict and revolution, but this time on sexual, racial, religious, pretty much any front you can think of where there might be differences between people. The long march through the institutions was in full swing, and here we are today. The bottom line is, who are the Marxists? They are those who, among other things, actively promote things like exposing children to explicit, explicit sexual content in all its various forms, for the express purpose of convincing these children that their parents, families, churches, any bastions of stability in a chaotic world are their enemies and oppressors. You shall know them by these fruits. It is that battle as old as human history between Genesis one, God created and saw that it was good, and Genesis three, did God really say, "And ye shall be like gods"? The destruction is deliberate, and you can't be neutral in this fight. You're either for them or against them. You have to pick a side. Thank you.
Thank you all for being in attendance this evening, both online and in person. I also thank Mr. Brady, who signed up to speak. There will not be any public comment responses from the board this evening. Moving on to board comments.
I do have a board comment. Sorry, sorry about that, sir. Do you ever know me to be quiet, Chairman Kudland? I would just like to say, in response, I know we had a reflection yesterday on September the eleventh and what all of us, how we all deal with that in different ways, but I just wanted to say a special thank you to the first responders here tonight, Noonan Police Department. We recognize you, we salute you. Thank you for that. On a personal note, I realized that my son was eight months old on September the eleventh, and he is now a Delta airline pilot. So I thought, wow, what we see here in America, he educated through Calweda County's public schools, has been amazing, and he now flies. And I, and I just thought about that yesterday and thought about, this, this is the district that built him, and I thank you for that. I appreciate you all for that. And I wanted to say, yesterday was a very special day. I'm not going to say why. For me personally, it was my thirtieth wedding anniversary, so it was wonderful for that as well. It was also someone's birthday, so I will leave it at that. So thank you.
I got a real, real quick comment. This Friday night is Northgate High School's homecoming. I'd like to invite everyone out. Seven-thirty at Northgate is the kickoff time. Also on Thursday night, this Thursday, September fourteenth, from five PM to eight PM, is the Northgate Homecoming Festival, so if you can come out, please do so. I know that they would love to have you on campus Thursday and Friday.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeauz and Mrs. Dees. Any other board comments? Now hearing none. Is there a motion to approve to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven to zero.